Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to Order on this 11th day of April 2019. Please rise and join us for the pledge meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I'll ask our deputy clerk, Kim Otati, to please call the roll.
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Loftstead.
Here.
Councilwoman Scolar.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Stubbone.
Here.
Okay, so we have the full board. We're going to start this morning with a discussion of the 2019 reassessment. We're joined by Lisa Gorey, our sole assessor, Maureen Burgland, deputy town assessor, and...
James Perini. I'm the appraisal analyst with the town.
James Perini, appraisal analyst. So, I know the board is aware of this, but maybe the public at large is not. So, the town of Southampton is one of the only towns in the state and probably one of only two towns on Long Island that is a full valuation town. Years ago, the town decided that the fairest way to tax real property was to make sure that everybody's property was valued at its true value. A lot of towns, you may have very houses that might sell for the same price, but one is taxed at twice the rate of another. That's, it's not that way in Southampton. But to do that, it requires that every year, the town tax assessor takes a look at changes in the market. Of course, anytime somebody adds to their property, and maybe they put a pool in or add an addition to the house, we see that, and we do make adjustments to the value based on those additions. We also do a market trend analysis. If an area of the town is becoming more popular and rates are going up, the sale prices are going up, that may be captured in a market trend analysis that the assessor does. And then every four years, we do a larger, more comprehensive look at the town's valuation. And I guess 2019 is one of those years?
Yes, 2019 is our full appraisal reassessment.
Right. And so, now, you know, people automatically think if they get a letter that their property value went up, that means their taxes are going up. That isn't necessarily true. It really depends on the tax rate. So, if the tax rate goes down enough to offset the increase in property value, you're, you won't see an increase in taxes. You might even see a decrease in taxes. And over the last few years, we have every year lowered the tax rate. At the same time, we have seen the property values across the town increase. The latest numbers are really a look back to, I think, two years ago, 2017 is what's being captured in the current assessment?
The sales, yes.
The sales from 2017.
The latter part of 2017 and the first six months of 2018, basically.
So, the good news is property values across the town have been improving. There's no area that's been losing value. And it wasn't always the case, but now it is, and that's a positive thing for property owners. It's challenging, you know, right now it's income tax time, and we're all paying our taxes, and if our income goes up, we know we're going to pay more in taxes, and we can offset that by our higher income. But with property values and tax assessment, real property assessment, you could end up with a higher value property if, you know, the market trend goes up without having the additional income to pay the additional taxes. So, it can really impact people, particularly those on fixed incomes, because now they have a higher tax bill without additional income to pay it. So, I'm gonna...
Can I ask just a quick question, just along those lines? So, the, if the appraised values, the appraisals, the assessments have kind of leveled off like they have now, more or less. So, but we wouldn't feel then, if we're calculating based on methodologies, we wouldn't really feel the lull that we're having now until like 2021?
Until next year, correct.
Right.
Right.
So, it is true. I think things are leveling off, but I don't think prices have dropped. I think that sales have slowed a little bit, but I don't, I don't think we've seen value changes yet. So...
If the sales stay slow, they will.
There's been a correlation between that dip and some of the national uncertainties as well, as I understand it, it's strongly correlated with some events, you know, the uncertainty people have relative to tax law.
Right. Tax law, mortgage rates.
Yeah.
I think some of the closings we're seeing are really deals that went into contract late last year when there was a lot of uncertainty in the stock market, if you can remember, so, and in the economy. So, I'm expecting things to strengthen now. But anyway, so I've spoken, I've talked enough. Lisa?
Well, I just had one question, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but while you're here, I just wanted to get, find, get an answer from you. I'd spoken to you about the, a little-known tax abatement process that we have here for people that build according to LEED certification. And, and it didn't seem like a whole lot, but I didn't understand the value of the appraisal process on that, how we evaluate those homes. Is that done in the same process as we do everything else here? So, we'll grant an abatement because they're being more efficient in the building of that, of that home, but that also adds a value to the house itself. So, when it's appraised, it's appraised at, on the basis of those improvements. And I'm not sure how that's valued.
Well, they're appraised basically the same as anybody else. It's a cost per square foot. It's just the difference that they have the certification from whatever agency that gave them the LEED certification. Right now, the exemption that's granted is only for the first million dollars in assessed value. So, you know, if they build a, you know, five million dollar house, the exemption's only going to be that first million dollars that they're going to be exempt from. So, and it's for 10 years.
And these LEED requirements are, they're required in our code?
I believe they are. Yeah, I believe they are in the code.
Well, the...
And there are different...
There's HERS ratings. There's different ways to get there. Doesn't have to be LEED.
There are different certifications. There's like a silver, platinum, and a gold. So, they all have different exemption requirements.
So, let's hold off on other questions. I want to allow our, I asked the tax assessor to come and present, particularly because, you know, there's a grievance period, and, you know, we're in that, if somebody has, if wants to challenge their assessment, now is the time to do it. So, Lisa, why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for allowing myself and my staff to come in and do the presentation this morning. As you know, the 2019 reassessments are, it's, it's full underway. We are anticipating sending out the notices probably within the next week or so. We're going to send them out actually a little earlier this year because we want to allow, you know, the taxpayers more time to submit their grievances, have an opportunity to come in and meet with me and my staff before Grievance Day, which is actually May 21st this year. So, we're going to be sending out the notices earlier. So, with that said, I will move on with the, with the presentation. So, I gave each of you a handout of just some information that I put together. And the first page is just a, our results from the Office of Real Property Services that we receive every year. By doing 100% reassessment, we have standards that you know that we have to meet each year. And one of those is the residential assessment ratio, which we are at 100%. And this was just issued to us just in February. And it's actually an analysis of the sales that we use to arrive at the assessments for the, for the upcoming assessment role. We have to submit an annual report to the state every year in September, and they're actually reviewing the sales that occurred from September, from July 1st through June, June 30th of 2018. And those are the sales that we have to use, and they look at those sales, and they just want to compare our current assessments to the sales that they're reviewing to make sure that we are in compliance at 100%.
And we're at 100%?
Which we are. We are at 100%.
Pretty remarkable.
Yeah. And then the, the next study that they do is a, it's a CAMA ratio, which is a cost-assisted mass appraisal. It's actually the inventory of all residential structures in the town. So, it's a full report that we send the state, and they want to, they're looking to see that they're comparing apples to apples. So, they want to make sure that all of the postmodern homes are being assessed uniformly. The colonial-style homes, the number of bedrooms, bath, square footage, all of that is taken into consideration. And if they, if they have sales in a particular neighborhood of, say, postmodern homes, they want to make sure that the non-sold homes are being assessed uniform to the, to the sold homes. So, that's another standard that we also have to pass. And our results were issued on March 29th, and we are currently at 99.34. So, we're very, we're very accurate. And this grade actually is one of the highest that we have received over the last several years, and that's due to us updating a lot of our costs. We updated the, the cost per square foot in, in our software this year. We hadn't done that.
And if you're going to be not exactly at 100, it's probably better to be slightly below than slightly above. So, it means we're not over...
Correct. And there are some pages further on in the, in the presentation that I, you know, I'll get to. And then again, our, our equalization rate, 100%. I just got the email notification yesterday from the state, and what that looks at, it's our, it measures our level of assessment. That actually tells us, yes, you are definitely at 100% market value. That, that's the level of assessment that you are, that you are providing.
And how does that compare to other towns?
Other towns...
What do other towns do that are not at the 100% market equalization?
Well, say for instance, if someone goes to file a small claims, they actually have to use that, their equalization rate, they may be at, I think, maybe, I'm not sure, but Riverhead may be at like 0.75 or maybe even lower.
They use a multiplier?
They have to use a multiplier with their assessments to actually get to market value. Whereas, we're at 100%. 100 is our multiplier. That's it.
Where the equalization rate kind of is important or kicks in, and it could be in a school district situation, but, so let's say like the county. The county collects property taxes across every town, and it has a tax rate. And to make sure it's taxing fairly, because we're at full value, and let's say another town is at half value, they have to multiply that half-value town by two before they apply their rate. So, it's, it's just a corrective factor to make everybody to 100%. For us, they don't have to multiply, they multiply it by one, because they don't change the value.
And many of those other towns have not reassessed properties in a number of years.
Yeah, some they never.
And then some of their newer properties are assessed as they get their building permits. Is that correct? So, their, so their rates are really, there's a, it's not consistent compared to Southampton.
Correct.
I mean, it could be way, way low, like we have to multiply it by 10 just to get it to 10. Like there are 10...
Well, I have some questions about the equalization rates and school district funding. That's where it kind of raises that.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I think we talked about that.
Yes. Very interested and concerned about that.
And it's, you know, with schools, you could have a school district that crosses from one town to another, like Riverhead School District.
And Eastport.
So, you have an equalization rate on one side and not on the other. So, it gets really tricky, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, Eastport's a good example, too, where you taught.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big number.
East Hampton, it's, uh, Eastport, Brookhaven, and Southampton that all in that district.
Yep, share that.
Yeah. I mean, otherwise, if an entity like the county were to tax, let's say East Hampton, which might be a tenth of true value, they'd pay a tenth of the taxes on a same-valued house as us if they didn't correct it. So, you have to fix it.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. So, um, this next page, I just wanted to give an example of how we look at our ratios. And this area is in Flanders. It's a, now, ratio analysis of single-family homes, about 65 sales in that area during the sales period. And the, the weighted mean, which is the, the ratio in relation to the assessments, are at 84. Now, these again are at the time of the sale. These may not be the current ratios. They're at the time of the sale because our sales ratio report is looking at just sold homes. So, it's not all of the homes in Flanders. It's just those ones that have sold.
What does it mean, 84?
84 is the, it's, it's the ratio, the, the appraised value compared to the assessed value. So, it's not exactly, it's not at 100%, but it's, it's at 84% of full market value. That was at the time of the sale.
Is that the appraised value compared to assessed, or the sale value compared to?
The sales value, excuse me. The sales value, yeah.
The sale value.
Compared to the assessment, yes.
So, in this one particular area, we've undervalued, we've undervalued. We're 84% of the true value.
Yes. And that is probably because in, in Flanders, I mean, they have had, you know, they've had their, you know, share of issues. Back in 2012, we did a lot of market decreases there, and then they also had Superstorm Sandy. We reduced a lot of assessments there because of, you know, the impact that they had. And it took a while for people to start recovering from that as far as, you know, rebuilding renovations and stuff like that.
So, now they're bouncing back.
So, now they are bouncing back, yes. And the, the coefficient of dispersion, which you see is at 12.86, the acceptable range for that for state purposes is between 10 and 15. So, we are at, you know, just about 13.
Say what that means in English.
It just means that we're, we're actually valuing apples to apples. Orange is just, it looks at the uniformity between different groups of classifications of properties.
Okay. And can I just clarify? So, the, the 84, that means that the sales are lower than the assessed?
No, the assessments are lower.
The opposite way?
Yes.
The assessments are lower than the actual sale price?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
And then again, I did one, I wanted to do one for the other side of Southampton Town, which is in Watermill. 72 sales. The actual weighted mean was at 93, so still just below the, the sales values. And then the coefficient of dispersion, making sure that we are uniform with property classifications being grouped together, was at 14. So, that again is at, at an acceptable, acceptable range.
What's the, the range that you're allowing?
10 to 15?
10 to 15.
And that's state, the state?
Yes, those are state standards. And then the last ratio report I just wanted to do, just to show town-wide, this is all single-family homes in the town of Southampton, about just over 1,700 sales during that sales period. The weighted mean or the ratio was at 88.10, and our COD was at 13.67. So...
That's, that's average?
Yes. And then I just took some reports from Town and Country, just to show what the market was actually doing in the third and fourth quarter of 2017, which is, you know, right in the beginning of the sales period that we used. And you probably can't see where it's highlighted, where I highlighted it because of the, the print, but I just want in, in the second paragraph, it says, "The most glaring of which is that the 10 to 20 million price range found its groove again." So, it's just showing, you know, a lot of people, you know, they're going to, you know, say, "Well, there haven't been any, you know, sales." But, you know, I just wanted to, you know, demonstrate that, yeah, the market, it's still, it was still flourishing, you know?
Okay, so these aren't your words. You pulled this out of Town and Country.
Pulled it out of town, yes.
But that was 2017.
That was 2017, yes. That was, that was the third quarter of 2017. The next page shows they're part of, and I have the full reports here if anybody wants to...
But can I ask you, like, obviously, we have some incredible oceanfront properties, desirable to people all around the world with wealth, and they'll come in and they'll buy a 50 or 60 million dollar home. Is that going to push the value of everybody else up, or is that a kind of a separate anomaly? Is that going to hurt the average person because suddenly there's a sale for $60 million in Bridgehampton?
Not, not necessarily, no. One sale doesn't drive the market. We, we do have people that have come in, and they, yeah, they, they've sat down, they've met with us, and we realize that they've actually overpaid, because we have to do analysis. We have a group of sales that we have to view, and we know what the, what the actual market value for a particular area should be.
Right. But though some of those properties are very hard to value?
They are. They are, yeah.
I recall you had told us a couple of years ago that, I think it was 49% of our, our taxes realized from about 9% of the...
Exceptional homes, yeah.
Yeah. Is that ratio still pretty much...
It's, yeah, pretty much the same, yeah.
How do you account for...
It's almost akin to like a Sotheby's art auction, where they value a painting at $10 million, and it sells for $50 million. Why? Because somebody's willing to pay that.
Right.
Is there a way to account for, I mean, because a lot of the homes, like in the Bridgehampton, Sagaponic, whatever, there's, you've got those 10 to 20 million dollars or maybe even more on the water as compared to inland, just subdivisions of every year-round residence. Is there a way to, that you address that, kind of equalizing that out?
We don't, we wouldn't compare those properties to the other properties that are inland. They have their own neighborhood and... Right.
So, this area that you have, Bridgehampton area, which includes Watermill and Sagaponic, you're talking about oceanfronts as opposed, separate from inland area?
As opposed to inland, they're all, they're all, they're all looked at on a neighborhood basis.
Well, here, they're, they're just repeating what Town and Country.
That's your coefficient.
No, I know, but I'm saying...
Yeah, we have, we have 52 different neighborhoods throughout the town of Southampton. So, we have, we have north and south of Montauk Highway and Watermill, Bridgehampton. And then, you know, we have the oceanfronts in Sagaponic there.
Or bay, or creek.
Yeah.
Or non-waterfront. But I guess you're... They're all consistent with each other, not apples.
I guess to your, your earlier question, the coefficient of dispersion, that's, you know, basically compare apples to apples.
Right.
Well, what about if you have, you've been in your house since 1972, and your two neighbors have sold, and now mansions have gone up?
That will affect your, yeah.
Is there anything that we can do?
Not necessarily. It could, though.
It could, yeah. I mean, if it's, if it's consistent, and that's what we're seeing.
It's not so much the one house and the two neighbors. It has to be a larger trend within the neighborhood, right?
Right, yeah, it has to be a trend. And if, I mean, if that's what we're...
Is there anything that we do to offset that, though?
Yeah, you're looking kind of like the camera. You're saying you have to match apples to apples, bedrooms to bedrooms.
Yeah, but if it's in the same, if it's in the same neighborhood, like, you know, what was a five-bedroom colonial is now surrounded by perhaps five bedrooms.
Right.
And I hear that much larger, but it's still in the same neighborhoods. And I hear that all the time.
Yes.
Right.
Is there anything we can do about that?
If it's sold, it has to have sold also.
No, I mean, we...
This is a real problem for people who, who, you know, suddenly, maybe a year-round community, maybe it's in a village, suddenly becomes very popular summer home destination. The little houses get torn down, and then, and then you find that that little house, just the land under that little house is worth so much now to a spec builder who's going to come in and tear it down, build a big house, and sell it.
And then that family has to move out, and there goes our population of residents.
There's really no protection. It's very difficult. We've talked about this, like, how can we protect that, you know, year-round family or that senior citizen from a spike in valuation that has nothing to do with them?
And the irony of that is that some of the homes are, you know, within five to 10 years of it being built, and they're being torn down to do, to accommodate the larger home. And that was the basis of my question on the LEED certification and some of the effects that that has on, on building efficiencies and size, so...
Is there anything that we can look into, since we are one of the only municipalities that is at 100% value, that we can get a little bit of a break for our residents who are in those situations? I mean, it just seems like it should be more fairly considered, because we are a unique community in a certain way.
Yeah, I think something like that would probably have to go before, like, maybe legislation, maybe state legislation.
At least for senior citizens.
From this board?
Well, we have STAR, which is...
Wait, this is...
But I'm talking about people who aren't senior citizens.
That's us, our families. But we have to...
Well, to what degree does the STAR thing help us?
Me, too.
If their property value doubles...
Well, the STAR is just an exemption or a tax credit on, on the school portion of your, of your tax bill. I mean, and there's even changes with STAR, you know, coming down the...
Well, school is the biggest part of your tax bill. But what is, if you're, how, if you had the STAR exemption, and let's say your property value doubled, would that prove...
The STAR is not doubling.
Your STAR is not doubling.
STAR is not doubling. The STAR actually decreases every year.
So, it's not, the STAR is not going to save that.
So, the 100% valuation, you can finish. I do want to...
No, I was just going to say, you know, with the senior citizens, we make sure, you know, we send out their renewal applications every year. We send out reminders for them to get it in, because even if their assessment increases, their exemption increases in proportion to their increase in assessment, because it's at whatever, you know, they qualify based on a, based on a percentage. So, if they get 50%, you know, off their assessment before the taxes are applied, and then their assessment increases, that, you know, the, the exempt amount is going to increase as well. So...
Right. I mean, I would love to see legislation that prevented the market trend increase for people on fixed incomes, just with, just freeze it in place, or maybe it's adjusted in over a long period of time.
Or do it on transfer, collect it on transfer, up to cap it out.
Corrected on transfer.
I also think we have to think about families, too. You know, you have a young family, and they have a nice three-bedroom starter home, and mansions on each side of them.
Right.
So, a question on that, because a question's been asked of me, not by a lot of people, but by a few, particularly relative to the accessory apartment law. So, if they, they redesign their home to allow for that accessory apartment that gets approved, that necessarily affects the valuation of the property, correct?
Right, we have to reassess it.
Right. So, in the case where you have seniors living in homes looking for a second form of income, in fact, that income is, is offset by the increase in taxes, however it's appraised, correct?
Not necessarily.
No? Okay, that's, that was the question. So, when would it be not necessarily so?
In other words, if they, if, if it's a senior citizen, and say it's a couple, or one, single.
Or a small family.
And they're just converting a section of their home. It's not really changing. If they add, and I think outstanding separate... They're already being assessed for that living area. They'll be assessed for an additional kitchen facility.
See, I think that's something that we need to do some outreach on, because...
But can I ask you a question? Because I think we really need to think this.
I just want to get to this point, that we do some outreach on, so that people understand exactly what you just said, because I think there's a misconception out there that, that they are actually going to experience, they'll experience a change in equity, but they're also experiencing a change in property value. And it disincentivizes people to some...
Yeah, and I...
Yeah, and I don't think it does. And I'm trying to find a good way to explain it.
Well, it does, because they might think their property values are going to go up.
Well, that's my point. That's what I think of.
But I want to make it clear, and Lisa, this is something we should have a broader conversation about. If somebody's putting an accessory apartment in now, it has to be affordable, right? So, the rent is, you know, is fixed at a certain rate. And yes, they've already paying taxes on the square footage. It's within their home. I don't see that adding value to that property, because it's, it's income restricted.
Well, the square footage is already there, so they won't get the, they won't get the additional increase in assessment for that. But if, if they're building a separate structure...
Right, but if they're...
Or they're converting a garage into an accessory apartment, then that's different.
But if they're within the existing house, let's say they have a four-bedroom house, they're, it's a senior living by herself or himself, wants to have some income now, takes two of the bedrooms and changes it to a one-bedroom apartment with a kitchen. I don't know that increases the value at all of the house. Agreed?
As far as assessment, it's not.
Yeah, as far as assessment, yeah, no.
Yeah, I think that's the misconception.
They're already being assessed for that living area.
But the kitchen doesn't add anything?
It's slight. It's just...
All right, but it's, I mean, it's not that it doesn't. It may be slight depending on what it is.
Maybe a thousand or $2,000 in assessment.
A what?
Maybe a thousand or $2,000 increase for an additional kitchen.
In full valuation.
Because it's just the fixtures, the plumbing fixtures that have to be considered.
So, if it's a $500,000 house, it becomes a $501,000 house?
Possibly, if they're in a second kitchen, yeah.
Yeah, but they're losing a bedroom in doing that.
Right.
So, I mean, you'd have to really look at it. I would hope that people can put these in without seeing their assessments go up. They have to remove the apartment if they drop out of our program. It's within our affordability program.
Right.
It's a community benefit unit. So, I mean, I think that we should have a conversation here.
Yeah, definitely.
Look to see if there's a way that, you know, it possibly lowers their assessment, you know, I think, the fact that they have a community benefit unit now contained within their home.
Because the same argument applies to, what we're struggling with is the IA systems and how that's also evaluated. I know on the county committee that I'm sitting on, there's an issue that really doesn't seem to have an answer from anyone on how that gets evaluated. I can't imagine that an increase in the septic would have much... And I, and I think it sits in those, the IA systems that now we provide rebases for, for those people to put in, there is a, there is an increase in value. And I don't know if it's appraised in that fashion. I don't know what's ever been able to answer the question. Is that considered in the appraisal?
I did hear people say that it was.
I don't think so. I don't think it's true.
I don't think it's true.
I've heard it, though.
This is a separate question, but it's an important question. So, we, somebody puts in a $30,000 septic system. Now, I don't think... This is a separate question, but it's an important question. So we, somebody puts in a thirty-thousand-dollar septic system. Now, I don't think the cost of your septic system should affect the value of your property at all.
I don't think so. All of that would have to be determined in the market. Is somebody going to want to pay more because they have a thirty-thousand-dollar septic system where they, you know, the other house doesn't?
Does it allow you to get, would the addition of the septic allow you another bedroom? Because then it might arguably. I think everything is so particular to the piece of property.
I think it ought to lower your assessment because you had a septic system that cost you nothing to maintain before and now you're going to be paying six hundred dollars a year or so to maintain that system. To me, it's potentially a negative value and should be adjusted in the value of your home.
And the market will eventually show that.
And that's, and we don't have that history, so we're trying to anticipate that. We don't have that history. We don't really know.
It's an adding really cost to operate.
Make a different choice based on the availability of that system. I personally would, you know, we just don't know. We don't have that history.
But we, we should know. So I think the way to know is to have a professional appraiser, really look at these factors and say, okay, is this house, yes, it has a higher-cost septic system that, but the operational costs of the house have gone up. Is it a positive on the value or a negative on the value? We don't know. We should know. Because people are putting these systems in. And I think if they thought that their property value would go up because they did the right thing for the environment, they.
I think they should be incentivized to do it.
They might be upset about that rightly so.
Some might be happy about it.
Yeah.
Their values of their properties go up.
They might, but it could be disincentive to people to do the right thing. We have a lot of people volunteering.
More marketable on that basis. That seems, you know, I, I think that's what we'll bear out over time.
Particularly if you can add even another bedroom as a result of it.
So all I'm saying is that we should do a fair evaluation. And as people come in for the accessory apartment program, I'd like to be able to send them to your office so they could get an opinion from you as to if they're going to pay higher taxes if they put this accessory apartment.
We do get that currently. We get people that, you know, are proactive and thinking for the future and they want to know.
But please, when you do that analysis, know that that accessory apartment is part of a program, affordability program. And that they can't just rent it to some summer home, you know, summer rental and get, you know, make, make a killing on it.
Right.
Which.
Well, it's not done on an income basis, so they're not, you shouldn't be looking at that at all.
Well, they're, no, we're not looking at what their, what their mansion, we're just looking at, yeah.
For the residential, they're just looking.
Right.
Yeah, it's what contributes the overall value.
If it's over three units, rental unit, it goes into the commercial assessment category.
All right, so let's go, there'll be time for more questions at the end, but let's, let's let you take us through some more of your presentation.
All right, so, yeah, the, the next couple of pages are just, again, reports about the fourth, the fourth quarter of twenty seventeen and then the first quarter of twenty eighteen. The first three months of twenty eighteen were good to our Hamptons market. And then it, you know, just explains a little bit more about, of course, you know, the Bridgehampton/Watermill area. But then the last, the last paragraph down there, all of the Hamptons combined, the trend is clear. The first quarter of twenty eighteen was the best that was seen in years. So twenty eighteen actually came in pretty strong in the market. And then the second quarter of twenty eighteen is probably the end of the sales period that we're looking at. And then what I have highlighted actually was the, the fourth paragraph, looking at all the Hamptons markets combined. It is critical, crystal clear, we are in a very healthy home sales market. So.
Yeah, again, now this is a snapshot.
Right, yep. I do have the full report here, you know, if anyone wants to look at that. It actually is broken down by, by Hamlet, so I do have that available.
If you could forward it.
I know we're using county and country. Do they generally all kind of comport with each other?
Pretty much, yeah. I looked at Quark and I looked at a couple of them, so.
But I, you know, I, I think we have to look at it with, through the lens of understanding that these companies make their living selling homes.
Right, right.
They're going to talk up the market.
Right. Well, that's why I didn't look at just one. I looked, you know, I looked at.
There's other services that, I mean, just the numbers. That's all we need is the numbers, not so much the analysis. We can do the analysis on the numbers. So, but it is good to see what they are saying out there.
Right.
And our numbers are based off of the, the information that you get from the Office of Real Property Services.
Right, the state also does their own, so they actually provide us with, with the, with the trend for Southampton.
Right, and there's a lag.
Which I think this year.
And there is a lag, yes.
Yeah, so.
You know, we've been concerned that the limitations on the state and local tax deductions are going to impact the real estate market. We don't know if that's the case, but we've certainly it's, your property taxes were fully deductible in the past.
Right, yeah.
And now ten thousand is the max.
Right.
So it, it could affect the market. There's also.
At a certain level, it'll, some meeting in there, it'll affect the market. It affects it positively on one side and negatively on the other. That's kind of my sense of it.
The state has a sort of a mansion tax as well that they've adjusted. I think homes that sell for over a million. So they, they made it a little bit higher of a transfer tax. Whether that will affect the market, I don't know, but.
Right.
It's certainly going to affect people's bottom line. Taxes, property taxes are going up. Or, excuse me, their income taxes are going up because they cannot write off their property taxes.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
The next page here, the assessment review process. I just wanted to give an, an idea of the actual analysis that we do in the office and reports that we look at. You know, we have neighborhood changes by property class. Like I said, we have over fifty-two neighborhoods and we go through, we print out all of those reports. We look to see what has changed by, you know, say more than twenty percent. We go in, we look at that property, see if, you know, see if there's anything that actually stands out. Why did this one increase by, you know, twenty or thirty percent where the others in the neighborhood only increased by fifteen? So that's some of the stuff that we look at. Review of value changes by construction quality. We look at all the exceptional homes, excellent quality, very good, good, average. We want to just make sure that those are all, you know, consistent with their neighborhood. Jimmy also looks at all of the twenty eighteen grievance applications or the, the grievances that came in that were reduced to make sure that, you know, their assessments, you know, didn't increase. If it was an issue where we had the incorrect square footage, we want to make sure that that was addressed in twenty eighteen so we don't have to revisit it again as a grievance. And then the sales ratio by neighborhood, which I just, you know, showed you those few pages from Flanders and Watermill, you know, we look at those as well. And then the, the resources that we use in the town. I can't commend GIS and information systems. They are a very. Yeah, they, they are.
Can't command them enough.
Yeah, enough, yes. They are, they are exceptional at what they do. I think without them being able to provide us with a lot of reports and the stuff that they're able to do, you know, we wouldn't be able to do this in-house. So I have to applaud them.
I, I'm, I'm right on that, yeah.
And they got you an additional forty million in assessed value.
The pictometry, yes, the pictometry that we use, we had our, our imagery that was provided in April of twenty eighteen. Of course, with doing the reassessments, we have to have our imagery updated every three years.
So this is from our flyover?
This is from our flyover.
And then we, is that from structures?
They provide us with a report.
That were not permitted?
No, not necessarily, no, not necessarily that they weren't permitted, but it's just stuff that maybe we didn't have in our inventory, a renovation or an addition that we hadn't not.
We missed it, okay.
Right, yep. So it provides us with a report. It gives us the percentage of the change. So I ran the report yesterday and it's about forty million plus in assessed value that we picked up. And that's just since we started doing the report, I think in August, so.
And that's based on, on a perceived change in square footage? Is that?
Yeah, change, yep, and change, yeah, just additions, new construction, yes, yep.
And then all of this information gets extrapolated and distributed not only to the town but to the various districts and villages, departments, libraries.
Yeah, it goes on, yeah.
They all use that tax base to, or your evaluation to set their tax levy.
Yep. We also have Pool Finder, which Pool Finder, we did not get to look at that report yet, so we will be looking at that next year. But it also, it captures the imagery of any pools that are outlined in their imagery that we may not have in our inventory.
Somebody may have a pool that.
That we're not assessing.
It's not on our records.
Right, yep.
Your records, it might be in the building department's records.
Yes, yep. So that, those reports we have not gotten to yet, but we'll be looking at those probably for next year.
Correlate that with the permit in, in the permitting place?
Yeah, we'll see if they have a permit. And then again, you know, with the pictometry, we don't, we don't even have to go out to the property and measure the pool. We can do it right there from the computer because it does have the measurement tool, so we can just put it on the roll right from there.
And in-ground pool adds, what, like fifty thousand to a property?
Possibly, if it's a gunite pool, if it's vinyl, a little less, yeah.
But you wouldn't know that with an aerial picture with, like.
Right, so then we would, yeah, we would pull the permit, yeah, mhm, yep, yeah. And then we updated our Marshall and Swift building inventory cost tables, which I had mentioned before, that hadn't been done, you know, since twenty sixteen, so.
And that's related to the price per square foot for a particular quality of construction?
Mhm.
And that's all part of that camera analysis that the state.
So that quality of construction, is that based on year of construction or how does that, how do you?
No, basically the construction materials that were, that were used, yeah.
And how do you find that out?
Well, we actually, we go out to the, to the site.
Oh, you do, okay.
Uh huh.
And go inside, see the kitchen?
Yeah, we do, we do an inspection. We don't necessarily have to go inside, but if the, if the foreman or the construction manager or the property owner, they allow us inside, then we'll go inside and, you know, we'll see that, you know, what they're, you know, what they're using. We have an idea of, you know, what, what the cost is.
Got it.
That's on new homes?
New homes, rent, yeah.
Motivations to additions, yeah.
Yep. We also did updates and changes to our land rates. That's something that Jimmy, Jimmy does. He actually goes through basically the whole town using the GIS software. And that's something that, you know, he can determine based on sales. Because a lot of times, well, a lot in Southampton, we have, you know, we mentioned the, most of the values in the land. It's, it's, you know, it's not the cottage, you know, that's on the land.
Not the improvement, it's just.
Jimmy can determine, you know, what, you know.
So is it correlated?
Has there been major increases or decreases in that portion of it? Yeah?
Yes. I mean, when we, I basically go street by street throughout the entire township. And my whole goal is to keep our assessments as close to that hundred percent as possible. That's where that ninety-nine percent came. And that land value.
Can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Also, reconversations.
I go street by street and throughout the whole township. My goal is to keep the town at a hundred percent market value. So our assessment's as close to that as possible. And the bulk of the value is in the land. So, yeah, I meant to answer your question.
What would change it from?
Well, let's say, sales. So if I look at a street and I see there's three sales and they're all arms-length transactions and we're ten percent low on that street, well, we're probably ten percent too low on our assessments. So I have to bring that street up ten percent using the land value. Because the buildings haven't changed unless there was a renovation or a new construction.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So you correlate the land value with the improvement even though there hasn't been one? It's only the change in the market value?
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Keep going.
All right, and then the next page is just some public relations and outreach that we've done. I did a, with the assistance of Connie, she sent out a public service announcement on the, it's actually the back page of the notice, which I, which each of you also have. And it just explains, it's, it's, it explains about the reassessment, what to do if you get an increased notice, the documentation that you can provide to my office, an appraisal, recent sale, if you have any issues with your property such as any adverse influences like wetlands, you're on a busy, you know, traffic, high-volume traffic area, that stuff that can be brought into my office, you know, we could address that, so.
Do we do this every, do we send this out every year?
Every year, that goes on the, on the back page of the notice. It explains how to file a grievance.
Can I ask you something about the grievance that I'm always, if somebody files a grievance in year one and we bring it, we agree, we say, you're right, it shouldn't be that high. Why then do they have, the next year, if everything being equal, why do they have to come in? Like, why don't we just start from that place then for the following year so it's not, they don't automatically have to come in and grieve again to go right back?
If the market is changing from year to year.
It's a different group of sales that were.
We've even had years where it's.
But our starting point doesn't start from the new set tax. It starts from the first tax.
Yeah. When, when they get a reduction, what I do is I go through every single one that was reduced.
Right.
And I comp it out and I see if it was justified because the board makes the decision, not the town.
Right.
So if we disagree with the board and we can justify that it needs to go back up, we bring it up. But if it needs to be kept down, we will keep it down.
So do we, so the ones that are going back up, which seems like the bulk of them, we're making that determination that, yes, we thought it was too high for this year, but this year we're saying, no, it should be where it was last year now?
That's a possibility, yes.
It seems to happen a lot, just.
And the ones that went down, it could have been that, you know, maybe they purchased their property, you know, a year ago or a year, a year and a half ago at a, at a particular sales price. And now the market is indicating that area has actually increased by five or ten percent. So we can't keep that assessment down when the, when the trend is actually going up.
Do you keep on file the things that they brought in, i.e. it's a high-traffic area, the wetlands, so that you're automatically adjusting it?
Yes, we do. We scan their grievance applications. We keep them on file.
And we make notes, when we make a change, we'll make notes, traffic, commercial, whatever.
So you'll take that off of the assessment for the following year? You'll start at that base?
If it's, yeah, if it's a traffic issue, then we'll make that adjustment in the system. That'll stay there. That'll stay with the property.
We had, you had this at some of the, the citizen, the community CAC meetings. If there's a property owner in that scenario and they feel like it's a perpetual thing.
Right.
Our, our leases doors are always open for them to come in and meet with any of us. And we can maybe explain why it went back to a particular.
That would be great, only because.
Or go over more in detail what their issues were, as long as they are, don't have a representative. Because that would be crossing a boundary.
Right, if they're going to be.
Their representative could come in to us rather than the property owner.
Your, your particular, what you do is so nuanced to specific, it's so case-specific. It's hard to give a general rule. And we're used to really giving out general policies. It's very difficult. They really should be encouraged to come in and talk to you.
It is. That's why I've, I've been out to several CAC meetings just within the past couple of months. And I've had, I've had three people actually call me or come up to me after the meeting. I've reviewed their assessments and there were definitely issues. One person in particular had been filing a grievance every year with the company. And it come to find out, we had their square footage wrong. And we just fixed it. And when I fixed it in the system, it actually brought the assessment down to what they've been getting reduced to every year. So it's stuff like that, you know, that we tell people, you know, if, if you're filing every year, come in and see us because maybe there is an issue.
Right.
Maybe something is incorrect.
So this begs the question, what, what is the advantage of, and this is more of a policy decision with the board, what's the advantage of having an annual one-hundred percent assessment to market? This is a question I think we need to address.
I think it was a legal issue.
Most towns in the state do not do this.
No, I know. Didn't we have a legal?
And if somebody did have a grievance, for example, and their taxes were, I'll wait till you.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
If, if somebody did have a grievance and their taxes were adjusted, it would stay that way, at least until we reassess every, I don't know, five years or seven years.
So the question is, what's the benefit of being a hundred percent full value as a town?
And I, I know we did this in, was it oh-three we did this? It was a big deal. In the east, everybody, the property values went way up. And what you were talking about with some of the homes in Bridgehampton and Sag Harbor and Watermill people who had their homes for seventy years, you know, all of a sudden found out that, you know, they were worth a lot of money, which is a good problem, some might argue, but their taxes went up.
I think it was based on, that there was a, there'd been a, there'd been a ten-year lapse in assessments, right?
That's right.
And so people got a sudden shock. I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the impetus for this was to keep that shock to, to a bandwidth that's, that's acceptable to most people.
Right. And I understand that over time, it could develop a two-tiered tax system like what's being experienced in Nassau County now and what they're trying to correct. But is every year, reassessing every property every year, is, how is it advantageous to the town and the people?
To answer your question, it's accurate.
It's accurate.
So there's a fairness.
We're at ninety-nine percent. You can't get any more accurate than that.
Ultimately, you feel, you think it would be fairer, you would think if you assess it properly, it should be fair way. And it would have less impact upon things like you were talking about, like applying for building permits for apartments, accessory apartments or for septic. It shouldn't have that much of a dramatic impact. Sometimes it. It shouldn't have that much of a dramatic impact. Sometimes in other towns, where they don't do reassessments, they, somebody comes for a building permit for improvement, and then they get a real stick of shock. Here, if you properly assessed it, when you come from a building permit, you shouldn't have that stick of shock.
And then after time, you get inequity. You'll have, you know, the high-quality homes paying less in taxes than the lower.
The state does give us.
They get killed.
We get a small amount of money, like 120,000 every two years or something?
Well, yeah, whenever we do the, the full.
Because we're full value?
Yeah.
And there were definitely pros and cons to it. There is the equity issue. But that, that problem with somebody not doing anything to their house and the value going up, who might not be able to afford that additional taxes. It's important, though, to understand that if every single property in the entire town went up by 10%, nobody's going to be paying more in taxes. We're going to lower the tax rate by, by 10%. Governments and schools will collect what they need to run themselves. It's, the tax rate is the multiplier. If you, you have a higher base now, you're going to multiply it by a smaller number to collect the money you need. It's only when your property goes up faster than everybody else's property.
Right.
That you end up paying a bigger burden, a bigger, bigger share.
Or you've been.
There's built-in equity in that.
Or a particular area could have been under-assessed because there hadn't been any sales in that particular area. And this year, now we have three, four, five, six in a particular neighborhood. And we see that it was at 90% or at 80%, and we had to increase it 20%, whereas the average went up 10% or eight.
But, but I do like the question, Councilman, because.
Well, it also.
I wonder sometimes, too, whether we should be at 100%, whether it's worth it.
Me, too. And I, with most of the towns in the state using some kind of multiplier, I personally wonder about the equalization rate as they're set by towns. There's 932 towns in the state. And that equalization rate is the, one of the main factors for, for school aid. And 80% of our tax bill is from school districts. And I think we need to, to look into how that equalization rate affects the amount of state aid that comes to our schools. And in Southampton, we are, we have such a disparity of districts, you know, and tax rates and residences and different valuations that I think that it could be significant for some of our communities. So.
I'm not sure I understand it. So this, if let's, we're 100% equalization rate, if we were, let's say, at 50%.
The way schools are funded.
We might get more state money?
Well, the equalization rate is, is used by the state of New York to determine monies for school districts. Hampton Bays gets about $6 million. Other schools, you know, I looked at that one. I have a list in the other room.
Well, it's used to correct the assessment base.
Yeah, it's used to correct. And it takes in a, the equalization rate takes in a lot of factors, income, housing value, subsidized lunches, and one of them is the, is the tax rate in, in the, in the town, and the equalization rate in the town.
So what if we were at like 50% value, like?
Well, that's what I wonder. I, I don't know if the town of Red House in upstate New York, if they're at a multiplier of, a 50% multiplier, and we're at 100, if it's accurately being assessed.
But, but isn't it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that the, the state school boards can make a determination that there's greater need in another district and change those, those ratios without really informing the local school districts? Is that correct? That they're able to divert funds to what they would consider a district that need, has more need?
Well, that's the idea.
Yeah.
Equality in education where, and I do believe in this, is that, you know, schools that cannot necessarily, districts that can't afford education to the same degree as other districts get helped by the state. It's, it's an important concept, and I, I fully support that. But I wonder if our tax rate at 100% is doing a disservice to our school districts.
Yeah, I don't know how you find that. So I, I think what the.
Right.
I think what the state does is they try to determine the full value of real property in the school district. So for us, what we say is the full value is the full value because we're at 100%. They look at sales data in other school districts and say, oh, your, your assessments are half of what, we gotta double it. And then they divide it by the population. They figure out on a per capita basis the value. And I think then they determine what the school aid should be. We have some high-value properties, you know, and across the town, we're at, I don't know, 70 billion dollars in assessed valuation. Divided by a population of close to $60,000, it's over a million dollars of real property per person. It's a very high per-person valuation. It makes it hard for us to attract grant money from other entities. But my, and a follow-up question to, to your question, Tom, John, the land classification changes. So based on new techniques, you're telling us that you found 40 million extra dollars in assessed value. Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, using the, yeah, using pictometry.
You know, that, maybe that's part of the question also, is it whether it's 100% market value, but also opportunities for corrections in what's being assessed. Let's keep going, because I think, you know.
All right, so yeah, this is the last page here. It's just a demonstration of the, the town's taxable values. Over the last four years, 2016, we were at 60.6 billion, and today, or currently, we're at about 73 billion. The assessment rule has not yet been published, but looking at preliminary values, this is currently.
So this, I mean, this is both good news and bad news to me.
I understand.
All right, so if you look from 2017, I'm glad our controller is here, too. But from 16, from 17 to 18, there was about a 5% jump in the value of all the properties in the town. From 18 to 19, we're looking at like a 10% close to, right around 10% jump in value. And that's an enormous increase in, in value. Some of it might be new construction, some of it sales prices. That means that we have, literally have to lower our tax rate, or we'll, we'll have more money, we'll probably pierce the cap if we don't lower it. We have to lower it just to stay within the cap. And, you know, we don't control the school districts, which are 70, 75% of the tax bill.
Right, which I've met with the school districts.
They're gonna need to lower the tax rate.
And some of that's. Some of them have told me that they, that's their intention is to lower, is to lower the tax rate and pass the benefit on to their taxpayers. That's what I was told.
It seems to be consistent change.
Yes.
I mean, if we're looking at 2016, to put it in dollar terms, right, you're, from 2016 to 17 is a $3 billion increase. Then it's a $4 billion increase from 17 to 18, and up to today is a $2 billion increase from last year. So it seems to be. How much from last year? Much more than that?
These are 2017 numbers, right? So I'm looking at.
No, I'm, I'm looking at 67 billion versus 73.
Yeah, 2019 based on 2017 sales.
Six, six billion.
Six billion, that's what I said. But the increase from the two years is roughly 2 billion across as a, as an average from 2016, per year change.
I'm not seeing, so three.
You had 60 billion in 2016, you had 63 billion in 2017, you had 67 billion in 2018. I'm doing it in real numbers.
And that's another 5%.
You're saying 5, he's saying 2 billion. You're saying 10.
I'm talking about dollars, not percentage increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. So it's 3 billion, then a 4 billion, then a 5 billion.
And these are all based on 2-year prior's numbers.
Right.
But as a percentage, you know, we were growing by about 5%, now we're growing by 10%.
Right.
That's, I mean, typically, that's great news to have a community across the board. We went up 10% in value in a year. That's something to celebrate. But if we don't adjust the tax rate down considerably, you know, we would have more, we'd be collecting more taxes than we could possibly need to run, you know, all the programs that we need. So it's basically saying that there's going to be a tax rate reduction next year to offset this. Probably the largest tax rate reduction we've seen in a long time. Yeah, the controller probably doesn't like me saying this, but. Yeah, well, that's something we have to control, too.
Can I just ask you a question? The 10% is based on the town-wide?
It's based on town-wide, yes.
Not those group of sales in that 10 to 20 million?
It's, it's town-wide. I mean, it's due to the market, and it's also due to, like Maureen had mentioned, in, in previous years where we didn't do increases to some of the areas because there wasn't enough sale or because the market was flat. And now it's showing that, yeah, it, it justifies an increase in those areas as well.
So.
So that's probably why it's such a big jump this year.
So what happens? So now you're about to send out letters. You're gonna send letters out to how many people?
We're sending out about 30,000 increase notices, which is why I said we're gonna send them out early.
And the average increase is gonna be about 10%?
Yes.
In valuation?
For this year?
About 10%.
You're gonna have people screaming, because they're gonna get those letters, some are gonna go up 20%, and they're gonna think their taxes are gonna go up. 30,000 people.
Depends how we work.
Well, we, you know, we, we're gonna be opening up, we have the online grievance on the town's website. We're gonna be opening that up, making it available to the public sooner, so they don't have to wait until May to file their grievance. They can also come in and meet with either, you know, Maureen, myself, or Jim in the meantime. We are, I spoke with Sunday. She's gonna allow us to use the annex over there to meet with people if, if necessary. And also maybe the, the libraries, you know, to meet with people. I've spoke with Detroit about maybe the influx, the additional influx of people coming into Town Hall. And we have agreed, rather than, you know, stand, having a line for, for people waiting to get an ID badge, we'll just, we'll be able to, a security person down there will issue like an assessor's pass. Just, you know, give them a pass to come up to the assessor's office so that it doesn't, you know, form a line, you know, downstairs of people waiting to come in.
Can I ask a question? I mean, we're, the 10% jump is gonna be huge, and we're anticipating what's gonna happen on Grievance Day. Is there any wisdom or anything that we can do so that we can start the process now, where people can come in and get an idea what it's going to be, and we can make those adjustments before?
Well, that's why, yeah, that's why I want to send the notices out.
But I don't think these notices, honestly, people get these, and they're looking at their tax bill, and this is, may or may not even be read. Like, there needs to be like a really aggressive, you know, community outreach campaign to get people in earlier. And you need to perhaps have like a staffing ability so that they can come in every day from now until then, all day.
So, and this is, this is true of the towns and the schools and everywhere else. There is a tax cap in place in New York State.
Right.
Will prevent us from collecting in taxes, I don't know what it is for next year. Usually it's 2%.
2%.
2%. Sometimes it's less than 2%. We're not, on average, going to collect more than 2% more to run the government and run the schools, et cetera. So if somebody's property values went up by 10%, we're going to be adjusting that tax rate down. So that on the average, we're not collecting more than 2% from people. But they're going to see that their property value went up by 10% and immediately assume that their taxes are going up by 10%. So we have to do some education. I, I would assume the same thing if I saw, and I'll probably get one of those letters, because it sounds like most people are getting a letter from you. 30,000, how many properties we have? 50,000?
50,000.
So more than half the properties are getting letters from you saying that their property values went up.
How many did we send out last year?
Just under 20,000.
And how many people came in and?
We actually had, we, at Grievance Day itself, we actually had 220.
That's not bad.
Right.
It was quiet.
On 20,000 letters, you had 200? Yeah, because.
Well, because we have the online grievance.
And the actual increase, you know, I think if, if you publish bands of what those increases actually mean in terms of a, a monthly increase to your taxes or a biannual increase in your taxes, it actually doesn't amount to much. I mean, I just look at it, you know, 40 grand on 5,000, I mean, 4, $41 on 5,000.
Can I ask a question of Lynn?
You know, I, I don't think that's significant in that sense. Lynn, you wanna come forward?
In the letter, do you, do you give square footage and lot size and number of bedrooms and bathrooms?
No, that information is available in our office if, if they come in and request a property record card, but it doesn't go out in the letter itself.
That would be a different.
The letter is just what your assessment was last year, what it's, what it's anticipated to be this year. That's, that's the letter.
Just a, a question. First of all, I, I would put the explanation that you just gave about the tax cap and that, you know, regardless of what you see, it's only gonna be this, that needs to be like bigger print and right top before they even get into the bulk of this, in my opinion. And then Lynn, so do we then go into the tax stabilization account reserve that we have in order to make up that, what Jay just talked about?
I don't, no.
So how do, he's saying?
Well, I'm not necessarily agreeing with all of that, so that's why I'm kind of just hedging my bets. I just, when we calculate, this assessed valuation and how it relates to our tax cap calculation is a little bit more complicated than a simple, just take this number and plop it into our, our tax levy next year. We are actually working with, two years ago, when we did the tax cap cap, it's not this. This won't even appear for another two years. We go back two years, which was a good year then, too. And then they allow us, a percentage of that adjustment goes into our tax cap calculation, not 100%. And then, based on that, we then calculate what, how much room we have in our levy that we can increase. And it's kind of correlated to assessed valuation, but not 100%.
Because we've been doing it at like 3% to 5% each year, haven't we?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we've been able to cut the tax rate as a result of our assessments going up, but, you know, as a result of a lot of other things, other revenues and everything else that have been going up. I kind of equate this to the Federal Reserve and how they try to manage the interest rates. This is much more historical data. I'm dealing with stuff as, that went into the bank yesterday, and I'm not seeing any of this. I explained that to you yesterday. I, we see our CPF revenue dropping. We see our building department revenue dropping. We see our mortgage receipts dropping.
Exactly.
Right now, I'm dealing with real data as of yesterday's deposits. This is, again, is way historical, and I caution against banking on any of that.
You say banking on it, what do you mean?
Meaning like relying, probably with assessed valuations going up, is they can go down very quickly, too.
And I would think that's where they're a little bit headed based on what you're seeing.
So that's why I caution us trying to figure out this, and, and before we go cutting taxes and doing all of this stuff, we gotta really see where we are at the real-time data and, and factor our decisions based on that.
So when you're budgeting, you really, it's, it's really kind of misleading to be looking at this, because this is not, this is two years ago.
That's, that's just old data. This is, you know, it's historical sales. It's, you talk to a Realtor today, and that house that was worth 5 million last year, he's gonna go try to sell his neighbor's house. He's not getting 5 million, he's getting 4 million.
Right, right.
But we will be using it next year to set our tax rate.
Not that, well.
Or two years.
It's a, it's a delay.
This is a problem with that full valuation.
It's, it's a challenge. And so I, I need to caution everybody that when we talk about our finances, although this looks like a good picture, when it comes down to where the pavement and the tires at the road, it's a little different picture.
So how would we address that in a more simplistic manner, just so like when somebody gets their tax bill or whatever, this is, it's kind of explained to them in a way that's easily understood, bigger type again.
We don't know what the tax bill would be.
Don't know. We don't know what the tax bill's gonna be.
Right. It, it comes down to this, what they, the first thing they need to look at is, what are we saying your, we think your assessed value is as of July 1, 2018? Realistically, most property owners do know what their house is worth at a particularly given point in time. They could reach out to their local Realtors, you know, just to kind of confirm, too, that they're in the right value. They, we have a resource on our website that shows the area's sales maps for the, for this point in time that we're giving you this tentative assessed value. And they could look at sales around their property, and they know their neighbors' homes pretty much. And they could say, okay, in comparison to my neighbor, okay, this seems fair. It seems like, yeah, you have placed the correct value on my home. It's where it doesn't seem correct, you know, they, they have the opportunity to file a grievance. But if it is the correct value and we're required to assess at 100% market value, the other options are, they, they need to look into exemptions or personal decisions on what they're gonna do to maybe potentially offset their future tax.
I have a quick question. So could there be a situation where we're using your numbers for property tax and assessment values, but we're using your numbers to set the, the tax levy?
No, no, my numbers are her numbers. I, we, the assess, assess's role is to set the assessment.
Okay, because then it would be.
That's one fixed number that we report, and that's the number that everybody uses when we determine your tax.
Okay.
But, you know, a part of what this adjustment was. But, you know, a part of what this adjustment was, and it seems like it's a lot larger, but it's kind of just like a relative number because I think we were playing catch-up with bringing ourselves up to market value. We were more in the eighty percent of market where we realized a lot of this, well, oh, boy, we better catch up, get closer to a hundred percent, otherwise we're going to lose that designation as a hundred percent.
Is that true?
Well, just in some of, like the, where I showed you in Flanders.
Right.
Where we, where we were compared to the sales, we were at eighty percent of market value rather than a hundred.
When was that?
But townwide overall, that was looking at, from two thousand and seventeen, when they looked at our, when the state looked at our sales file in September and then they looked at the, the assessment roll that we sent and more, the town's inventory, that ratio, what I showed you in here is actually at eighty-four percent. Whereas, you know, even though the town, even though the state said we're at a hundred percent because that was townwide overall, but in certain areas, we were still under market value.
So you, a lot of that change is catch-up. So that catch-up is kind of hurts, too.
So people in Flanders are going to get letters saying that their property value?
They did, and I actually went out to Flanders on Monday. I was at the CAC and, you know, I spoke to them and, but their assessments, their, I think I looked at some of the assessments, they may be going up like maybe, because we're sending out thirty thousand increase notices, your assessment may be going up ten thousand. It may be going up twenty thousand. It doesn't mean that it's, you know, you're going to see like, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in increased assessment.
It might be a five percent increase.
Flanders is maybe like ten, twelve, fifteen thousand.
Yeah, often less.
It may also be important to note to people that the town of Southampton does not necessarily determine their entire tax bill. Most of it comes from their local school districts, some of it comes from their fire districts. And we think people understand all that and sometimes they do.
They do, but it is based on their evaluation of their property.
Right, the evaluation will determine, but the tax rate for the district or the fire district.
That's an important thing for.
That's why we have, you know, it's really important to control spending at all levels of government.
Right.
But can I say, and I sort of wanted to respond a little bit to something that controllers said. Yes, it's true that property values, you know, next year could go down, but they also could go up. There's a lot of positive things going on right now. GDP is growing, unemployment is at historically low rates. Our crime rate fell again. It dropped twenty percent last year and it's, this year we're starting off with, again, with a slight reduction. Interest rates continue to be quite low. You know, there's a lot of factors that will affect property values here. We have a strong economy in New York. People still want summer homes. There's only so many of them available. It, they might not go down next year, they might not stay, they might actually go up again. So there's a lot of things that control that. So I don't want to put out there that we think that maybe property values might go down. I think they're just as likely, if not more, to go up again. So it's still a great place to live and work and raise a family or retire or enjoy a summer home. And people know it.
I agree. I mean, there's this misconception that things are leveling off and they're going down. And I look at the numbers all day long and the ones that are just selling now, and that's not true. It's not going up at the same rate as it has in the last year, year and a half, but they're still increasing.
Yeah, and sales, I know sales in Hampton Bays are really hot. I know people sell property in Hampton Bays and there's a lot of properties transferring. And I, I think the year started out a little bit slower, but now it seems to, the people I know in real estate are saying that things are doing okay. It's picked up. You know, we'll see when the numbers for the year come in.
I'm very conservative in my numbers, that's why.
It is true, the first two months of CPF were weak.
I went from ten million when I started to fifty million when I'm here, that's why we were.
We like it.
All right, well, you were saying last year that our mortgage tax revenues were going to be down. They were down a little bit, but not nearly what, as bad as we initially thought.
No, and we're paying cash and things and before you know it, that snowballs and you have more money to do on other things instead of paying it on interest and debt and all of those stuff. So it's all good.
But we do have to deal with the fact that people will be getting these letters soon. So I think that educating the public, giving them factual information. I think, you know, the more we talk to the schools and the other levels of government, you know, to, for them to understand that this increase in assessment needs to be matched with a decrease in the tax rate to the greatest degree they can, I think is an important message. So, and I know you've been sending that message.
Yeah, I, yeah, like I said, I met with the school districts, I think it was last week. And, you know, I can't hold their feet to the fire, but, you know, they did tell me they, you know, their intentions aren't to pass this.
Right, that's what I've heard, too. I've talked with Lars Clemenson about this, too. I know they're going to do everything they can to keep spending at the minimum.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. All right, let's do some updates. I'll start. I know some of you attended Dr. Goldblair's State of the Bay. He does this every year at Stony Brook Southampton. It's always interesting. It's going to be rebroadcast on CTV. You know, I urge everybody to watch it. It's really full of a lot of information. It's very thorough and, you know, I have to say, pretty upbeat, pretty optimistic this year. I guess Schenectady Bay, for the first time in a very long time, did not have a single brown tide last year. That, that is great news. That seems to indicate that we're moving in the right direction. There were some really other positives that make, the eelgrass beds are coming back. A lot of acres of additional eelgrass beds. You know, we're so used to like negative, hearing negative things that, you know, doom and gloom with the environment, but it seems like there's some, real, some real positive news. Hard clam populations and I know, you know, John is much closer to all this than I am, but from listening to his talk and some of the work they're doing on harvesting algae and all different techniques, the advanced wastewater systems, these IA systems, the progress they're making at the Clean Water Institute at Stony Brook is really, is remarkable. It's really promising that they're, they're going to have new systems that remove even more nitrogen.
And they're natural and gravity fed.
Natural, natural, gravity fed and no more expensive than a traditional sanitary system. I mean, that is great.
That was exciting.
That is exciting news and, you know.
But it's a larger footprint, so it's not available in all, in all lots. And it's still under approval through the county health department as well, which is a, you know, a time-consuming process.
Okay, I am trying to point out, though, that these were, in general, I think, really positive directions. There are some that they were talking about that didn't have the larger footprint, that were more contained in boxes. So, and even conversions of traditional sanitary systems by adding wood chips to the cesspools, they're, they're getting some positive results from things like that.
Soft, soft bulkheads using PRB technology within the bulkhead.
That's what the Hampton Bays, I mean Hampton Falls was doing.
Taking a bulkhead and adding a PRB into the bulkhead. So there, there, I would say there, on the whole, the news was more positive, I thought, than negative. But watch it and form your own opinion, some of you were there.
Well, there's some very, there's some positive news in some areas, but there's not so positive information, occurrences in other areas. So we still have a long way to go and a lot to get there. And I appreciate the positivity of the, of the presentation relative to Schenectady, but we also know in the Pecanic Estuary, we still have a lot of things that are, you know, we need to work on.
Absolutely.
One of the main points that he brought out is that as far as climate change goes, the northeast is actually warming faster than other parts of the planet.
The water temperatures.
The water temperatures, right. And so that, that is going to be, that is affecting our bays, along with the nitrogen.
Yeah, no, water temperature is a bigger, it hasn't gotten as much attention, I think, than it deserves. Warm water doesn't hold as much oxygen and that's a real problem. It's also, you can exceed the habitat thresholds for certain marine species that they can't live in waters that warm.
It's actually interesting, there's been a renewed interest in base seawater exchange infrastructure or ideas to help with that. I was talking to the Pecanic Estuary Committee meeting yesterday about, about that. And I'll probably present on that to them. But that seems to have, that seems to have gained some, some traction with, particularly with the scientific world. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can explore that in great, in greater ways to help with all the things that he was, like Chris Goldblair was talking about.
There was one of, one of his students, graduate students, has been doing a lot of work with macroalgae and growing algae and turning it actually into fertilizer. I thought that was really interesting, where you can harvest. So the algae can, not only pulls the nitrogen out, which is good, and then you pull the algae out and you then turn it into a fertilizer, which the numbers were, you know, it was as effective or I think even more effective than Miracle Girl. So this idea that rather than importing nitrogen into our community to use as fertilizers, we can actually pull the nitrogen out of the bay and use that to fertilize lawns.
And the same theory can be applied to people's lawns. You don't have to, you don't have to spray a lot of fertilizer on your lawn. You could mulch your, your grass back into your lawn. You can do a lot of strategies like that where you don't need to be applying a lot of these chemicals.
So.
I thought it was promising that the Western Long Island Sound, the dead zone in the Western Long Island Sound has actually been reduced, the policy changes in those areas.
Right.
We're doing it in Chesapeake.
Yeah.
So we should be looking at it.
So it's going to be on CTV. It should be mandatory viewing for, I think, every citizen.
It was well-attended.
It was really good.
I don't think there was an empty seat. We were sitting on the side.
Yep, yeah, it was, it was really good. So there's also, I wanted to remind everybody, April fifteenth, not only is it tax day, but there's a meeting here at Town Hall on the new septic systems at six PM in the Town Board Meeting Room. So members of the county.
No, that's actually got, been changed.
Oh, no?
It's in the auditorium now.
Okay, so it's the same date, but we're, we're moving it to the.
August fifteenth at six PM.
Okay, and county officials will be there?
Vendors will be there and our staff will be there to be able to talk about rebate programs, how it works, what's available, both county and town.
Right.
And it's in conjunction with, East Hampton had a similar thing, similar event, so.
Oh, right, this is Concerned Citizens for Montauk and Group for the East End.
We're working in conjunction with a lot of different advocacy groups to help promote the systems.
So you can do your part to reduce your nitrogen contribution through these systems. We have grants available at the town level and at the county level. And, you know, there is likely that at some point, these systems will be required at all properties. So doing it now while these grants are available is probably a good thing to do. There are some areas where it is mandatory already when you're building a new home or adding on to a home or.
With zero to two travel zone for new construction, substantial reconstruction. And we're going to be expanding that law. I think that in the coming months, we'll be looking at that in more detail.
The other announcement, on May thirteenth, I will be holding a hearing at six PM at the East Quogue School on the sufficiency of the petitions that were submitted for the Village of East Quogue, the proposal to incorporate East Quogue as a village. There were some seven hundred and eighty petitions. And if anyone from the public has concerns about the validity of those petitions, this is the time where they should come and approach me with whatever those concerns may be and go on record. So again, that is May thirteenth at six PM at the East Quogue School. And that's all I have for announcements. Julie, do you have anything?
Nothing today, thanks.
Councilwoman Scolar?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Buvie?
I do. The septic replacement, we already talked about. April seventeenth, from one to three, we have the Pecanic Estuary Program. It's a local government roundtable in the Riverhead Town Hall. Three on April seventeenth. So we'll be talking about a lot of the issues we just talked about, but also some of the other things that the Pecanic Estuary Program is doing. They're doing their ten-year review on the, on the document, which is sort of mandated. It's a really interesting program, so we're trying to get as much feedback from both the local government, I'm the government rep on that, on that committee, or one of them. And I hope that people will come out and participate or at least know that this government group is meeting then. We also have the, another committee I sit on, the Agriculture Lease Program on April twenty-third, here in this boardroom on the twenty-third at six PM. We have the Agriculture Lease Program. It's a ten-year review. So the ten years are up for the rules that are in place governing leasing as agriculture leasing program. And we're in the process of trying to update that and rewrite that. And we need the input of a lot, of a lot of growers and people that are stakeholders in these programs. I think it's really important that, that you come and hear what's happening and offer your voice. And then obviously, May fifth at Good Ground Park, we'll keep promoting that Earth Day at Good Ground Park. It's really kind of building up to be an interesting cross-section of a whole bunch of different issues related to sustainability and green technologies and things like that. So I, I think the weather, I hope the weather will cooperate.
I think it's May fourth.
I have May fifth on here.
Saturday.
Saturday.
May fourth.
May fourth, and now I apologize, it's May.
I think the rain date is May fifth.
May fifth, okay. May fourth with a rain date of May fifth. And I urge everyone to attend. They, it's a good event, so a lot of fun.
That's at Good Ground Park?
That's at Good Ground Park.
We have, Connie, what's the, the date of the vigil at Good Ground Park? That's also in May. On May eleventh, we'll be doing our second vigil to remember our victims of the opioid epidemic. It's a great time to be with the supportive group and tell stories about lost loved ones. It was very powerful last year. As you know, last year, we talked about the nineteen individuals from the year before who had lost their lives last year. We had six deaths in the Southampton community. So we, we set up these rings of candles. So it'll be shrinking that ring and we're hoping it goes down to zero this year or it's one for this year so far, unfortunately. But it was a really nice event last year and a little bit different than other forums we've had. This was much more intimate and people talked about their brothers and sisters and their moms and children. And in some cases, it was the first time they ever talked about it publicly. And there was lots of hugs and support. And I think it was very healing to be able to talk about it. And I think that those types of events are helping bring awareness. And, you know, we obviously are there with support services, too. So if there is somebody who is struggling with addiction, there are people who can help them right there. So again, it's going to be right before Mother's Day, right? May.
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
Seven to nine PM.
Seven PM at Good Ground Park. We'll talk about it more as it gets closer. I'm sorry, Tommy, John, you had something you wanted to?
Oh, no, no, I was listening to what you were saying.
Oh, sorry.
It's something that has touched us all, I think, so very important. But also, I'd like to encourage people to please volunteer in your local fire departments or ambulance. We need volunteers. It's an important part of our, our community and it's a great way to get involved in our community. It also offers a retirement benefit and some, you get to meet some really great people in your community and, of course, help those in need. So much of what we do and what we have is based on volunteerism and, and we need that to continue. So please volunteer. Thank you.
You know, one other thing I'll mention, a couple of years ago, we entered into a stewardship agreement. There's a house in Hampton Bays, it's the oldest house in Hampton Bays. It's called the Ella Squire's House. And with a not-for-profit, we turned the house to, over to their care. What they are experiencing, well, first, they've done some great stuff. The house is now not only on New York State Registry of Historic Places, it's on the National Registry of Historic Places. And so it's a really important, I don't know how many national, National Register of Properties we have in the, in the town. Probably not very many.
It's under ten.
Yeah, so that's, that's a very important designation. They are trying to get grant money to fix this house up and they're running into a wall. And the wall is that the granting entities won't give them money because they don't own the house. They have a stewardship agreement, but they don't own it. So we're talking, I met with Robert Strata. agreement, but they don't own it. So we're talking, I met with Robert Strata, who's involved with the not-for-profit yesterday, and I know Town Attorney Jim Burke has been involved with this. So we're talking about putting an easement on the house, a historic preservation easement, so it can only be used for museum types of purposes, and actually transferring it to the not-for-profit. So they would own it with a reverter, that if they did not use it for historic preservation purposes, it would come right back to the town. That would put them in the position to get the grant money to be able to fix the house up. So Jim, you're working on this, I know.
Yes, I've spoken with Mrs. Strata many times on this, yep, and we're coordinating with the former CPF manager, Mary Wilson, and I can speak to Lisa about it also. The CPF actually owns the property around it, but...
Again, I discussed this with, Lisa, can I introduce you to everybody? Lisa Combrick is our new CPF director, replacing Mary Wilson, who for, I think, 17 years was our CPF director. So this is Lisa, and we're thrilled to have you on board, and we're looking forward to working with you, and...
Same here, thank you.
Of course, historic preservation is just one piece that CPF does. This house is not a CPF house. It's a, it was not purchased with CPF funds. So if it was, I think we could use a CPF fund to restore it. But because it wasn't, and there's no, we haven't figured out a way, a mechanism to move it to CPF. You can't do it with town-owned properties.
Yeah. My understanding, there are not-for-profits who want to give money to the Gardner Foundation. I think is one of them that is interested in helping on this, but they, they do not get themselves involved in municipal-owned buildings, and that's, so we're trying to...
So that's the issue. So I don't know if we're going to do a work session on this. I just wanted the board to know, because at some point, there'll be a resolution to declare the house surplus and to place an easement on it and allow for the transfer, if the board is so willing. I think it's the right thing to do with a house this important. I don't see another use for it, other than as a museum-type of property. It's the oldest house in Hampton Bays. And, you know, either we're going to pay to fix it and run a museum there, or we're going to use this not-for-profit. So I would highly suggest that we use the not-for-profit. And they are very dedicated, and I believe that they're in the position to get the money to properly maintain the property. So, does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, far too many for the time we have.
Okay, but no objections to moving that forward, the way I described?
We had a lot of discussions about this. You know, the whole purpose of having a stewardship with an organization was to do exactly what, what you're talking about doing. So the rules seem to have changed somewhere along the line, so I'd need to hear a lot more about that.
Okay, so maybe we could have Mr. Strata come before, would you like it in a work session to talk about it, to go through it?
I...
Be happy to do that. And Lisa, we could, maybe we can all, we could schedule a work session to talk about the house and what, what roadblocks they're encountering, and make a decision as to if this is the right path. Okay? Anybody else with anything?
No.
Okay, all right. So we have some executive session items, acquisitions, and we have personnel matter as well. So I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Scolar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.